The mayor and city clerk and city treasurer met last day to discuss the tax levy. And one of the things that was drawn up by the city treasurer was that in order for us to make our break even on our pension obligations with the two, that we was having to have at least a two and a half percent increase in tax levy. Remember, the tax levy is a two and a half percent is only on our share, which is like twenty six percent of our corporate tax. So anyway, since Brandon was pretty much about what's going on with the tax levy, one of the challenges we're gonna have this year is unknown is what the legislators are gonna do with the two pensions other than combine them. You know, the administrative costs, we want nothing about it. So keeping that in mind and not wanting to raise the tax levy any more than what we're going to have to, the recommendation that came out of that working group was two and a half percent.
That's a lot of percent.
Last time it was, last year was three and a half percent. So I mean, our recommendation is to take it two and a half percent. That will pretty much break even for two pensions, right?
Yes.
So...
No, I'm sorry, I'm clear.
Go ahead and say it.
To put extra money, and I know those would be, that may be a call for that. I'm not sure if this is the right time. If there is the right time, I've never been in favor of it anyway.
Do you mind?
No, to put extra money.
Combine, combining is gonna happen.
Yeah.
There's no doubt about it.
There's just no detail about it.
Yeah. And so we're just kind of unsure right at this point in time what any administrative cost may be, or any other hidden cost that's, you know, that's gonna be involved with this entire new...
Just a couple of years ago, the state's Department of Revenue, the county of here, started charging one percent to collect sales tax for. Hadn't ever done it, thank God. So I don't know that they won't, I don't know what the fees will be on this thing. I know you're, we're kind of talking apples and oranges one is a year. But if they do what they say they're gonna do, we don't need to put any extra money in that. Like that's, I guess that's the bottom line. It's gonna happen. Trust what they say is gonna happen. Don't fight it. But don't do anything out of the argument right now.
And they're gonna tell us what we have to do in there.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so, but...
And I got the banks calling me up. Are they gonna lose the checking accounts or no? I don't know.
Yeah, we can, by, by, by statute, we can go up by two, five percent. However, we haven't been at that rate for a number of years. And like Ron said, the last year was three and a half percent. But that, the body that we, that met last Thursday is making a recommendation of two and a half percent. That will break even for the, for our contributions to the group's pension.
Percent was in last year.
Yeah.
And then in the next year.
So anyway, there's other entities out there that are involved in this that are wanting the five percent for their shares. But two and a half percent is what was our committee...
And we had a good year when other revenues have been exceptional. I mean, we're gonna be amongst sales tax, income tax and home rule, we're gonna be up $286,000 over last year. So we don't need to cover the pensions, but everything else is gonna be...
We're good.
And the pensions are covered at what percentage?
Two and a half percent.
No, I mean, what percentage of the pensions are covered? Isn't there, they have to be funded?
They're both between fifty and fifty-five percent.
Well, that's something too that they're looking at kicking that down the road to some 2040 to 2055.
This is the way with pensions is that every time they come close to the expiration date on when, when you have to have it funded, they move the goalpost on down the road, you know. So you just never know.
To say it's funded, I understand what you're asking, Brandon. They're fifty-five, fifty-three percent. And you say, well, it's only half funded. In terms of being able to pay off pensions in perpetuity, that's probably true. But we're not paying off pensions in perpetuity. We're paying off pensions one year at a time. And so it's, that, we've always funded what the state asks us to fund. And then usually...
The legislature said it's one year again.
But just, I don't know, if, if they change the actuarial assumptions, if they do all that, if they change it to 2055, we could be sixty-five percent overnight.
Yeah.
And with what's going on now, the pension changes, who knows what's gonna happen there.
What was mentioned in the report, our agenda about 1.7 or 1.9 percent on fiscal terms of the maximum?
The CPI.
That's the CPI.
But they've gotta go the full, they've gotta go the full five percent or close to five percent as possible in order to pick up the new EAV, new construction. If they don't, if they leave it anything lower, then they may lose out on the extra. And that's what he was trying to get across. But they're, they're limited to where there is the CPI. But then you've got the EAV with new construction that they can collect on also.
They can collect it from there.
We, on the other hand, home rule, we don't, we don't, we're not in that category.
Right.
But the bottom line is, is the, and the reason that you've got first reading of that ordinance tonight is because we have one meeting in December at the council's discretion whether or not they wanna have a second meeting. But this levy has to be passed and sent to the county before the last Tuesday of the month, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, or something like that. It's gotta, and we have to have that to them in order to have that levy put on, so.
Last Tuesday, you sent it, right?
Something like that, yeah, depending on what it is.
Anyway, for the committee members that are present here, that's, the recommendation was two and a half percent. So any discussions, Mike?
No, I think it's probably a good call. Not knowing what we're getting into, combining the pensions and everybody else, maybe taking care of some others' leads. Why should we wanna do any action?
Right. And you know, you can call it a political stance or whatever you wanna call it, but let the school district do the bad guy this year. Hey, we lowered ours a percent. I'm stupid, I think, to say that either. That's what people think. I mean...
Right. I take the rest and I thought you asked for five percent.
Just to let you know, you don't have that on the sheets that I gave you there, but the, the request from the fire pension was 1.130880. So basically, 1.3 million dollars, 1.1 million. And the police is 1.3. So we came as close as possible at the numbers that I gave you there.
2.3 according to Ron is if everybody's gonna be break even.
So... I have one question. So last year, our 3.5 percent, what were we the previous year? Do you have any information?
Five, three percent. Is it three percent?
Yeah.
I think it was, I mean, we were, we were gonna go three again last year.
Yeah, I think it was.
Yeah, the recommendation from the committee last year was three percent. And we ended up at three and a half percent. So the recommendation this year for the committee is, what our understanding is two and a half percent.
Financially, two and a half percent covers us.
Yeah. Any questions?
The ordinance, the first reading of the ordinance that you got on there has that blank. So that will be filled in by the city attorney when we complete that. That is just the first reading. The second reading will be next month. So you'll have a little time to digest what you've kind of gone over tonight. If you have any questions on any of it, get ahold of Ron or myself or, or Don, either one. And we'll talk more on, on what it is. And I can even get you the information because we've got the last three or four or five, whatever ordinance is, the tax levies, enfiled downstairs. So we can look all that stuff up to see where we've been over the last four, five years. But I believe they're right. Three, three percent, two years ago, three and a half last year.
Yeah.
And we're taking it down just to collect enough to pay pension. Pensions have gone up ever since I've been on the council. But they went down one year.
Yeah.
One year. And we lowered us.
And then the, 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 the interesting thing, I mean, you think when the market, one year we did 11 percent return of both of them, and they went up. But the state changed afterwards. And I don't know, the state may have said, I don't know, I mean, the state may have said to the actuaries, do this thing to bump it up. In other words, let's get, let's make the requirements more, get the pensions current. But now, I don't know if the same actuaries are gonna be doing it. I really don't know. Like, the funds are supposed to be held separate. These gains are supposed, you know, how to allocate the gains. If they, let's say they make $50 million in gains, how do they, do we just get an equal shot? Every city get an equal shot? I don't know.
That's why the article's in your column today or Sunday. I don't think anybody read that. But there's a couple of lines there at the bottom that says, "The challenge is how to combine them in a way that generates administrative savings and investment gains." And it goes on to say, "The devil," as they say, "is in the detail."
Right now, we pay about, it's based on the value of the fund. It's a percentage. But each fund pays about $30,000 a year in fees to investment advisors, 32,000, 8,000 a quarter.
This is another one of those situations where...
So if it's over that, we're already, they better get some good returns.
It's a situation where they passed a lot and nobody read it.
Yep. And another thing that the board of attorney brought out to us, they're talking about comparing it to IMRF. The reason IMRF looks so good some years, they're not restricted on what they can buy. The pension funds were restricted to 60 years, and 160 and 165 of equities. In other words, you can only buy the stock market, mutual funds, ETFs, things like that. The rest of it, you're putting in one and two percent returns, 40 percent of them. So to get eight percent, you gotta get 14 percent almost. I mean, and now they're saying, well, it's gonna be like IMRF, which is kind of scary because there have been years when the IMRF dropped 25 percent.
Okay. I don't, there's no further objections or anything. That's the recommendation for two and a half. Sorry, two and a half percent. And that is first reading will be tonight.
Adams?
Here.
Bartlett?
Coop?
Here.
Bockley's?
Here.
Flanagan?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
Womple?
Here.
Formowski?
Williams?
Mayor Ezra?
Here.
City Attorney?
Here.
The first item on the agenda under the mayor's report is to discuss internet service agreements with CAS Cable TV for the municipal services department and the wastewater treatment plant, which basically would tie into our street department and our wastewater. We did this about a month ago. This is just a contract agreement with CAS to, we're trying to get our own, build our own network with our own, our facilities and wherever CAS, you've seen them around the Jacksonville area for years, putting fiber in for businesses. And they're, we're willing to get on that. And then eventually, we want to, when they're in the east side of town by the water plant, we're gonna do that. So it's just kind of tying in. And it's not, maybe someday, I hope they offer fiber to the door.
Well, I, I mean, I've said this before about with the satellite fire department, it's $3,600 for a three-year contract. And these two, the city garage and the sewer department are 4,000 pieces or 79, 20 for three years. And so there's over $10,000 for the next three years that we're just paying to other internet service providers because we don't have the infrastructure, like you said, here at our municipal level, to be able to utilize everything that we need. And that's part of the problem with the connectivity. I know I helped join Jacksonville to Next Century Cities as a member. And I was on a membership call today with the commissioner, FCC Commissioner Starks from Washington DC, talking about what kind of technology they can provide for the rural communities and what kind of funding is gonna be available for. There's a lot of benefits to being able to just have that infrastructure here at municipal level. You said yourself, CASCOM's been here for years installing fiber. Well, we don't want them here for years. We want it done. And we want it to the community. CASCOM's only providing it to the businesses. And then what about our community citizens? They're, they're not worried about that because it's not profitable. So what we need is the infrastructure, like the roads that we provide to CASCOM and MediaCom and all those to let them use it. But our own fiber network, like the roads, to be able to let internet service providers like CASCOM or MediaCom provide a reliable service through our fiber network. So it's more competitive. Maybe we won't have to pay the $110 a month for each of those entities that's on this agenda each month for however long, because there is no competition here. And I think we ought to look at fiber at the municipal level. I know this conversation is gonna come up again in the next item on the agenda. So we just have to look at how much infrastructure isn't here that we're sitting here having to provide to other companies to install for us because we don't have it.
And we've asked CASCOM, and they're not interested to the bill yet. But they're, at least they're going to the businesses.
Which is the case because there's...
And we can't tell them to come to the bill. I mean...
We can't. There's five internet service providers here, and each of them doesn't wanna branch out into the community because it's not cost effective. When CASCOM runs a fiber line, and then MediaCom runs a fiber line, and then, and so, and if we put it up, then they could just use it. They don't have to worry about branching out into the community. It'd be our internet highway instead of having them put it up to whoever they want to.
Any other discussion?
Okay, committee reports tonight, finance, IT and personnel. All of them, Coop?
Okay, as we discussed in the finance committee meeting, we must have the tax levy time. And after some discussion with the mayor and city clerk and city treasurer, we would like to recommend, and the approval of the finance committee members, we would like to recommend the, a two and a half percent tax levy increase. That's a percent less than what it was last year. We can go up to five percent, but we don't want to do that. Two and a half percent will allow us to meet our pension obligations for the fire and the police. It's just a break even situation for us. So that'll be on the agenda for tonight. Any questions? There's two readings. Two readings on that. First reading due tonight.
Okay, Parks and Lakes, all of them, Bartlett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two items. The first item is discuss the Mrs. Park van stand. And those of you who are in the council in 2016 recall that we reached out to Ben and Associates who did an inspection of the gazebo and gave us their recommendations. In their conclusion, based upon their visual inspection, the gazebo was in very poor overall condition. And they would recommend that the entire structure either be removed and reconstructed with similar materials. And it would cost between 70 and $120,000 with prevailing wages to do that. So it's been in the Parks and Lakes now for a couple of years. And at the last, last Parks and Lakes committee meeting, we decided that we wanted to bring it back to the full council for discussion to see really what direction do we as a, a council, where do we wanna go with that? It is on the national registry. And I can show you pictures of how deteriorated it is. But again, their recommendation is to redo it. I spoke with Marcy this morning about the work that she had done in 2016 and trying to get the word out. There was a big, there were several articles in the newspaper to try to get some nonprofits, some other businesses in town to come forward to help us rebuild it. And no one came forward at that time. So this is where we are. But right now, in its condition, we need to make a move on. Other members of the committee or the council have any thoughts on what direction? Yes? There you go.
Are there no grants available or any kind of funding to be able to...
So I...
Historically?
I personally haven't looked at any of those. But I believe that Marcy had looked into that in 2016. We looked at lots of different options and had conversations with members of, I believe, the local committee at that time. And again, no one came forward with any suggestions or ideas at that time.
I think they're mostly exhausted with it.
And we had a similar, and I found this in my files, when Ron Gray was alive, they had to help save the van stands in community park. And they did some 5Ks and raised some money. I was kind of hopeful that Steve would be here tonight. And I think he was instrumental in helping with that project.
Well, I think we should look at some kind of fundraiser or grant process before we do decide to demolish it.
This was an outside group that did that. So it wasn't, it wasn't the city that did it. So another group came forward, Marty Acosta and Ron Gray worked to make that happen. So by all means, if there was a group that wanted to come together, that wanted to pull it together. This was prevailing wage costs of 70 and $120,000. If we could get another outside group to come in, it would be, of course, about half that.
What if we did a survey and found out that 80% of the people wanna keep it, but nobody wants to pay for it?
So, so the other side of it is, what, what function does the van stand actually use?
It's supposed to have...
So what's, people maybe would use it for photo opportunities. So is it worth $120,000 for the city to invest in building it back up when we don't really have a function for it? And for the past two years, no one's come forward to say that they want to take it off. So barring any, what other could go in and pass this right? Barring any other thoughts? I think at the very least, with the council's approval, I think we should put a timeline on it. If it's been six months, no one comes forward, I think the city's gonna be forced to have to take it down.
Well, looking at the condition of that and everything, it's a hazard.
It is.
Oh, that was a year ago?
2016.
Yeah. It hasn't gotten any better.
Hasn't gotten any better. The city has, you know, made it so that people can't get on it and...
But then it's in high score. Someone should get on it and do something. And it's gonna have an accident, the floor's gonna fall through, ropes gonna fall down.
Did you say it's all in the story games?
Yeah.
Is there a GoFundMe that we could put out just to see how much it can raise?
But if you don't reach the amount, then what happens to the money?
It gets returned?
Is it because of historical society or anybody put any interest in trying to do anything either?
Well, before, when it came up in 2016, no one came forward. And there was a huge media splash. And I wasn't a part, I wasn't really in on all the inner workings of that at the time. But Mike came, speaking with members of that committee from 2016, nothing, nothing came of it.
Put a timeline on it. Is there any, any step up?
Any of the regulators are doing?
Would it be just to announce a timeline on it to the public so that if there was an effort to save it, they could come forward?
I think that's what we hope to accomplish this evening, to say, if, if not by June 1st of 2020, the city will be forced to make some, you know, we'll have to take it down unless some groups come forward or would wanna team up to rebuild it. And I think it's possible. I mean, there are big groups in this community who have done that before. There might very well be someone who, or several groups that would want to come together to make that happen. But what I'm sharing with you is since 2016, no one has come forward to do that.
I think it's a right thing to do just a timeline, let the public digest and see whether or not there is any interest in helping to renovate it.
In the very least, if it's been six months, even if there was a grant opportunity and, and it was beyond our six-month time limit, we could come back to the council and say, hey, we're in the running for this potential grant. And we're not gonna go for three more months.
Right.
At least we have a plan or looking towards something opposed to just letting it set there and fall apart. Does that seem reasonable, six months or...
Yeah. July 2020? I like it.
June or July?
July.
July.
June, I guess would be the end of fiscal. That's where I'm thinking, non-fiscal.
Non-fiscal.
Non-fiscal. All right, do whatever you want.
I mean, in the winter months, they may not think about, so the winter gets...
Get the spring in there, get the summer out there. So I would say probably, let's look at the end of June 2020. Is that for your work?
Sure.
That's just in case someone wants to run, but they don't have to have it done.
No.
Someone wants to, they come in with a plan and, okay.
Because other than that, that thing should not be there, functioning in that condition. That was a wild good flag, but...
Dan, do we have to do anything in writing or do we, just a matter of the minutes and...
Yeah, I will check and see. I don't think there's anything, you can take this action. I don't think the fact it's on the historic register is gonna block anything that we're gonna do. It just adds emphasis to if somebody wants to take some action, they gotta do fairly quick.
And the only bit of research that I could find, it was actually built in 1908. So, and it had the architecture. Okay. Anything else?
No spare.
Okay. The second item that I have on the agenda tonight is discuss the city of Jacksonville's recycling program. So in October, Area reached out to, to me and then also came up and visited with the city regarding some changes in just recycling in general. And Eric from Area is actually here. And Eric, if you don't mind, would you maybe mind sharing the contents of your letter with the full council?
Yeah, the, the basics are that recycling industry is upside down. It's cheaper to put stuff in the landfill than it is to recycle. And that's a very sad state. And so as we kind of try to figure out what recycling is going, going forward, we are trying to purify the product that comes to the plant, that comes out of the plant. And so we wanna take out a couple of items from the recycling stream that are listed in your contract that says we'll take. But I'm telling you today that plastics number three through seven and glass, most of it we're collecting is going in the landfill. There's no market, there's no one to buy it. And so we're trying to improve our, our product. And so we're, we're basically double handling that material that's collected here in Jacksonville. I also gave a little report that over the last year, we've diverted 480 tons of material from the landfill to the, to the recycling center. Now, some of that stuff had contaminated material in it, and it had glass, and it had some of these plastics that we were not able to sell. So they went to the landfill eventually. But that's still a large volume of material that's being diverted. Jacksonville has historically been a recycling community. And we don't want the program to go away, but we want to capture things that are viable. And plastics number one and two, which are water bottles, pop bottles, milk jugs, those are 80% of what goes in the recycling bin anyway. But the vanilla yogurt cups, we don't want those anymore. There's no one to buy them. And so we're asking for this change, change in our contract and you to, you know, help understand what we're going through. We're losing our shorts in the recycling industry. It's not gonna go away. But we're like farmers. We're harvesting material from the trash and trying to sell it. And right now, the price of that, of that material is very, very low.
So you're sorting all the recycling, basically as it comes in landfill or working that way?
Yeah, we, we take it from here, ship it up to our sorting facility in Peeken. And the cardboard goes one place, the aluminum goes another, the plastics get separated out. And so does the glass. And then it turns into these big bales that we sell as a raw commodity on the open market. And when, when it comes to glass, we're competing with sand. Sand is, is an abundant, inexpensive raw material. And nobody, and there's a transportation component when you're taking recycled glass and sending it to Chicago, Wisconsin, St. Louis. And there's no way to make money out of that. And so that glass is going in the landfill.
Do we know what percentage of the residents are actually utilizing recycling program?
You have just a little over 2,000 households that are participating in the recycling program. Under our current contract, we'll provide carts or free carts. And we see programs up to 2,500 households, a little over 2,000 right now, which is a step up from where you were, based on the last contract.
And so as far as Area goes, they just purchased this Peeken recycling plant three years ago?
We purchased that in 2015. And then earlier this year, we put brand new equipment in it to sort our system. And glass is hard on new equipment. That's another reason that we're, we're taking it out. But we're committed to it for the long term. We just have to get through this knuckle. And it looks like it's gonna be 2021 before this starts to turn around. The Chinese back in, the end of 2017 basically cut off recycling imports. And so, yeah, this massive supply and demand is cut by a third the value of employment.
And so as far as the recycling program for Area and before that, then you used to take it to another store? And so as far as the recycling program for Area, before that, didn't you used to take it to another source to recycle it for you?
Yes.
And as, as far as I know, that source was Midwest Fiber?
Correct.
And they still recycle glass and still will be recycling glass, as well as all plastics. I think the problem that Jacksonville is having is Area is the only provider. And then what happens is we have to look at if having Area take the recycling to someplace that will for the rest of the contract, or having somebody else like Waste Management come to collect our recycling, to take it in the future? Or, I mean, I guess I'd like to see with this China thing, with them not taking plastics, there's going to be somewhere that it's going to go, it's not just going to be stacking up on barges like they've been doing it sitting out in the ocean. Indonesia and some other countries that are less advanced have been taking the plastics. But we also haven't been doing a good job at separating it properly. And some of the single stream recycling programs like what Area and Midwest Fiber both use, utilizes a separation process that depending on which type, separates the glass out first. And I don't know if that's the case with Areas, but then the glass separated out first doesn't contaminate the other plastics and cardboards and everything. So the final product, the bale, is sold for a higher price, but if it's not separate, the glass isn't separated out first, then they don't get as much return on it. I don't think that's necessarily the city's problem, what company has what recycling mechanism. But we do, as a community, want to recycle, I think there's a number of people in here that would agree to that. We just don't want to get rid of the program.
Well, I don't think that's on the table. So we have a five-year contract with Area, and they've made some modifications to the contract. And perhaps there's some opportunity for, for us to work, work on the contract. And we're just going to bring the point up to all of you to see how we might go through massage it.
What's the time for enough on the contract?
Oh, we, we're August twenty twenty-two. And right now, the city pays about seven, this, this year, seven thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars a month for two thousand people. So it would be great if more people recycled, that'd be fantastic. I know from talking with Eric, one of the things that they'll be doing is hopefully tonight, there'll be some emphasis letting people know that eliminate glass from your single string because they're picking it out and going it into the landfill as it is, as well as divert those plastics as well. So at the moment, everything will be as is until the city discusses it further to figure out what next step might be with the contract. So that's where we stand this evening. Recycling continues as, as it is, except for you're not going your glass, and you're not going your three H three seven plastic.
What are you going to do with that stuff still in there?
Well, they pick it out.
We're still going to take it no matter what.
You're just asking.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're just asking from the point where it starts at the housing, to get rid of it to them.
And so Eric said that they would also be putting new stickers on top of all of the containers, so that would be one of their strategies for educating the community as well. You know, hopefully there'll be some mailers, there's some marketing that your company will be doing for us to help get that worked out. But I think as a municipality, we need to be thinking about what changes can we also make to this contract.
Is this going to drive up the land, the normal trash prices for customers at all?
No, sir. And, you know, one of the good things about your, your contract is our price is locked in, no matter what the markets do. And we have thousands of subscription recycling customers, where we have a one-on-one relationship, we send you a bill each month or quarter. Those customers are facing increases of fifteen to twenty percent, because that's the cost of recycling right now. And that's not a cost that we can pass on.
How much is that per month? For, if I as an individual wanted to recycle, how much? Because it used to be four dollars a month.
Yeah, it's, it's ten fifty in our biggest area in the Chillicothe area, where we have a subscription.
Comparable to this area?
It's going to be ten fifty or more.
Per month?
Per month, for an individual agreement.
Weekly, or is that bi-monthly?
Bi-monthly.
So twice a month?
Correct. And so what we've done is put what we call, what's like a fuel charge, a commodity fee, on top of the recycling customer that they're seeing go up and down based on the value of the material that we're collecting. And surprisingly, we are not actually losing a lot of customers because the people that recycle are those that want to recycle.
And Eric, I know in our conversation in October, you said that other, you mean, you come to other municipalities in similar situation. How many of your other municipalities have stopped the recycling?
In Henry, Illinois, we have a new contract extension, they've agreed to exclude glass and the plastics that we've talked about. Hickworth, Illinois, Hannah City, Illinois, those that are, that are agreed to remove, that got rid of the recycling, glass and plastics in the recycling programs. But if you do a Google search, you'll see communities that own their own garbage and recycling collection equipment and have tried to sell recycling on their own, those are closing down because they are losing money in communities that are taxpayer funded at best.
Any other questions for Eric? Dan, anything else?
No, I think that's covered it very well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have this evening.
Public protection, Alderman Hocken.
Discuss waiving bids and accepting proposals for a vehicle for the Jacksonville Police Department, and Chief Mefford has some information on this?
This was what I brought up last week about car twelve hitting the deer and being tumbled out. We settled with the insurance on that car, and I found a used one to replace it. The used vehicle is a year older than the one we had, but it has thirty thousand less miles on it. It has the same operational equipment, meaning all of car twelve's equipment will go right into this car and will be usable for us for several years to come. And actually, the price came in under what the seven was for, so I've asked to get permission to go ahead and move forward with replacing that car.
Good idea.
Utility, Alderman Hocken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, we have two items. Number one, discuss quote for meter reading fixed network. Now, third order is out.
Okay, so this should be, I think, the first sheet on in the whole stack of stuff I gave you. Some of you guys are new to this, some of you guys have been with us through this whole process, but we started back in two thousand and twelve where we started the meter changeout program where we went to radio read devices. So instead of the meter reading, meter readers having to walk from house to house to get the reading, they could drive by. With our ultimate goal at the end, once the project is finished, is to have some fixed towers where the meter readings could, we could get the meter readings without driving by. We call them towers, but they're, they're really little, they call them, the, the provider calls them gateways, they're little black boxes. What, what we've worked with is ESDA and the storm sirens, and we're going to put the gateways on all of the storm sirens. And it's going to save us a lot of money because they've already got the electric, electric setup there, so it's, it's not going to be expensive to put them in. It's going to be a win-win for everyone, mainly a very good customer service for our water customers. What we'll do is we'll be able to get those meter readings daily for all the customers in town. So if somebody has something that's leaking, we'll be able to catch that soon, instead of waiting for another month when they're, when we get the meter reading. So we'll be able to help, so that the water bills aren't going to be outrageous if you've got a toilet. There will be an app also that you can put on your phones where you can see your water history. It'll be an hourly history, so you can see how much water you use. So if you're out of town and you're worrying that maybe your pipes might freeze or something's going on, or like me, I have water in my pool because my, my water's leaking in the middle of winter already. So I could see how much water I've actually put in the pool like, you know, yesterday when I'm filling. So it's, it's a lot of good information, maybe you, you knew your toilet was running and you fixed it, you could see how much water you've been losing. So it's a really good feature for our customers. The other thing is what we, we can do now is we have people move in and out of addresses all the time. We don't have to send the, the meter reader out to get those reads anymore, we can pull up those reads anytime. So if they move on a Saturday, we can get a final read on a Saturday. You know, they move when we're off on a Monday, we could actually get a read on Monday for them, so we don't have to push them back a couple of days. So it's a really good thing for our citizens, and I think that it'll, you know, it kind of help everyone in the long run.
And the money's in the bank?
Yeah. What will happen is if we sign the agreement, it'll take about three months for Badger Meter to get everything around for us. And they've been really good to us, they did the whole study on where the locations of the towers needed to be. I mean, it's like all of this stuff was included, where a lot of times we have to hire an engineer for this help. So they said that within about three months, they'll be able to start it, so it'll probably be the spring.
You're right, Don, Sally's got the really only cash register. Pretty big cash register.
Inside of my apologies, I have an email to you that never got sent today.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I just kept getting interrupted. So my, my question was, will there be any elimination of, of staff from not having to go out and read those meters, or will we?
Right now, right now, we're almost, we almost have one extra employee, but what we're doing is we're kind of shifting him around. Terry is really, he needs extra help all the time, so we're, you know, we kind of share with some of the other departments right now.
Has Badger done any other surveys besides the one for the tower? I mean, I know there's, the tower, the system that we're looking at is a ten-year-old system and that the newer models have been with the cellular endpoints, it transferred from phone to. And in this instance, again, we don't have the fiber infrastructure to transport the information from the towers because each water meter sends your information to the tower, and then the ten towers around town collect that data and then send it through AT&amp;T to, back to Sally at the water department. And if we had a fiber infrastructure, you could just plug the fiber into the tower and have it go straight there. Now, the question is with this proposal is there isn't any fees for reading, but I know AT&amp;T isn't going to just do it for free next year. I think in this proposal, it's included in the price, and I'm just wondering what kind of price it's going to be. Has anyone even thought about what the fee could be? If it's a yearly, is it going to be twenty thousand to AT&amp;T to read our meters? Is it going to be a monthly per endpoint user? And I know Sally and I specifically talked about this because I came to her a month ago over absolutely looking forward to a fixed base system. I think it's a great idea for the water department. But at the time, we, we were discussing it, there wasn't any proposal to do this. And then, so in the past three weeks, this proposal's came about with some ten-year-old equipment, and it is exactly what will line up with our equipment. I tried to get ahold of Joe Morel, who's the salesperson on the proposal, and it was his first fixed base system, so he was kind of unaware of what all the details were, and the guy that wrote the proposal, his boss is out deer hunting. So I wasn't able to actually talk with anybody who could let me know about what kind of fees AT&amp;T and Midwest Meter are going to be charging after this year's up. Now, granted, whatever fees they are going to be charging, if we do get a fiber network, we can always plug into it, and then we don't have to worry about it. But I was just wondering if anybody even thought about the fact that there are going to be fees after this proposal date is up?
Right, and I've got the, I've got the fees. Unfortunately, I don't have them all add up, but we, they gave us an estimate for the towers for this quote, that's going to be, it's going to include all the fees for the first year. After that, like all of the AT&amp;T, those are behind the scenes that will be, Midwest Meter will be, will have, and we'll be paying the fees to Badger and Midwest Meter. So it looks like.
And then currently, this proposal is actually the next upgrade to all of our endpoint systems. We don't have any of the endpoint systems that are cellular, all of them are the classic or the multi, which can be read by a drive-by reader or switched to this tower-based system, which is what is cost-effective. So we don't have to change each meter at the house to a different meter. But as, as far as looking forward to the future, I mean, I'm not saying that we're looking at this too quickly, but I will say again, I do think this is the best system for the water department. A fixed base system is definitely the way we should go for the community, it's just power we're going to get there.
My apologies. Go ahead and do a little music. Always been a little life challenge.
Like I said, though, our current system, our endpoints are able to switch over to the tower. And that, the current endpoint software, it, its end date is June twenty twenty. So no matter what we do, we're going to have to do something before June twenty, or they could just shut off the service because our software isn't supported, and then we won't even know what the meter readings are. So we will have to do something by June twenty. And I, I mean, as long as these towers cover the entire community and, and, and the cost for the next year isn't going to be something astronomical. I, I'm all for this, but I'd just like to know those costs next year before we enter this contract.
Okay, and I, we talked about that, and I've given you those figures, it's going to be around thirteen thousand for the fees.
So we can look at the thirteen thousand for the broadband for the city street department, the sewer plant, the satellite fire department for cable. And then we can look at the thirteen thousand for the information to get from the water meters towers to Sally. And then we add all those fees up about the lack of infrastructure of broadband this community has. And we need to look at how much we're spending to other entities.
Brandon, what's the capital, what would a capital investment to do that infrastructure do?
Don, I let give the, gave the previous survey to, and I'm sure he would be glad to let you see it.
Actually, I, I returned it back to the mayor.
Okay, yes, it was done five years ago, and there's three scenarios, and each of the scenarios has a different cost. And municipals the best for the city, there's a joint effort, and then there's just laying down the infrastructure and letting, so that'd be a capital expenditure that wouldn't be profitable, there would be no profit out of it, just be letting CASCOM and whoever use it. But then our fire department would actually get a gig service instead of fifty megabytes for ten dollars instead of a hundred and ten dollars.
The community we, we visited was highly now along the way, and they floated a twenty million dollar bond to pay for that. So it's an expensive venture, and it's going to take a lot of research.
What's, what would be like the return on investment for that?
Well, I know the break even from the proposal from five years ago, or almost six now, it was January of twenty fourteen, so it was break even last year and a half a million revenue this year.
That's if the city owns it.
That's if the city owns it.
Cost that level, and every survey that you look at, and they're in the same survey, they put what they want in it to make it sound good. But there's a lot of stuff in there that doesn't make sense, there's a lot of stuff. But they do residential down there too. Thank you, yes. So it's, it's not as simple as black and white on a paper, and oh, this is what this company says, so we can do it for that price. Ain't going to work, that's what the city can do.
It is almost that simple. I was on the phone with Ammon Idaho this morning, who after the FCC call with Next Century City's FCC chairman or commissioner, was talking about how they wanted to get all of the community connected, and what Ammon Idaho did was lay down just the infrastructure and then let the other internet service providers do it, but what they did was charge a sixteen dollar service fee, and then that covers all the maintenance for everything, they charged ten dollars for a gig, and, and fifteen megabytes is free, free. And then, so if you don't have the fiber connection, because what you're talking about is the roads, internet highway to all the, all the households, and then, so your household doesn't have the fiber, so then your hookup fee is three thousand dollars, but they can space it out over twenty years to where you only pay twenty dollars a month. So if you pay the three thousand upfront, then your gig service is thirty-five dollars, and if you want to space it out, it's forty-five dollars or fifty dollars.
The city's on the business.
The city owns it, but the city is able to make a competitive venture. Because like I said, they're paying $10 for 1,000 megabytes and we're paying $110 for 50. So that's 20 times slower and 100 times, $100 more expensive.
When you guys visited this before, there were issues.
Yeah, the quick side of that is it takes a lot of personnel to run that. And, you know, you're not, you have some very specialized people that's going to be running it. And then you have the installers and everybody else. Just a number of personnel. For Highland, I think that they had probably six, six to nine people. And they're about half the size of Jacksonville. So I mean, it's, it's, it's a healthy investment. But it's, it's something that needs a lot of in-depth study.
And I'd also talked with the Senator Duckworth over the summer when she came to take issues from our community over getting a fiber grant for Jacksonville. And they had totally understood where I was coming from because they couldn't even get logged on to the wifi at the library. And so when I'm sitting here talking with people like that that are really concerned about getting Jacksonville connected, so Tammy Duckworth will co-sign for a grant. I talked with Steve McClure last Monday. He will co-sign for a grant. He had a fiber study that he had town hall while we were having council. I wasn't able to attend it, but I would like to. So I talked with them Monday about it. There are people out there that are, are able to sign for us to get fiber here. I, I talked with Tammy Duckworth's grant guy and he gave me a list of, of 110 pages worth of grants that we could look through. I mean, there's stuff available if we're worried about capital expenditures that would make it a profitable venture to get into.
Brandon, I think your points are well taken. But I think where we are right now, we're gonna move forward with Sally's proposal to safety. This is where we are. And we've, we've been working towards this for a long time. And I think that we should give her the authorization to move forward to finish out the project.
It's the right stuff.
It is. And like she said, next year, we'll be paying 13,000 to AT&amp;T. And like I said, we don't have to pay that if we have fiber. That's a lot.
But we're not ready in 2020 to do that.
That's not going to, that holds, that holds 13,000.
Bringing it back to what you said, I support her moving forward.
I do, too. I am completely in favor of that.
So I can, I think we should move forward.
Yeah, we're getting away from the town.
Is that item number two?
Okay. So you're gonna see, the next is the budget, the utility budget. And the summary page is gonna probably be the, the best thing for you to look at on the budget. We're gonna see that the overall change down below after we take in the bond issues and everything. Looks like we have a $118,000 increase from last year. With, with us, we're, the Water and Sewer Department, we're an enterprise fund. So what, what happens is we create the budget and then we determine what the rates are gonna be so that we can pay, pay for the expenses. And we look very closely at each line item. And you can see that there really aren't that many increases because we don't wanna increase the rate. So we only budget for what we actually really need. We don't inflate that. So good news is at the, really, probably what's the most important thing is what are the rates, what are the rates gonna be this year? Minimum bill, 2,000 gallons, that's gonna just go up 15 cents. We worked and worked and worked. It was gonna be kind of a, it was gonna be way over a dollar. And I, I worked with Adam Wiggie and we just kept working and working and whittling things down and we got it to 15 cents. So the minimum bill users, they're the ones that notice the big difference usually. Right now, they're at 3550. They're gonna be at 3565. The 5,000 gallon users, that's probably most of us in here. We're gonna only see a 12 cent increase. So that's gonna be 6496. So you're, if you look at this water and sewer rate page, it's like the second page of the water and sewer rates, you're gonna see that the water side, the water rates actually went down and the sewer rates went up. Water rates went down a little bit. We had a bond issue that we just paid off. So that's why the, the water rates went down. I don't know, there's, I've thrown a lot at you. Is, do you guys have any questions on the budget or the rates?
12 cents is pretty good.
Thank you.
Any public comment at this time?
I wanna say something about recycling. Because I learned that it was on the agenda. And I'm, like all of you, I'm aware of China's changes, which have made recycling so much more expensive in the United States. Because basically, they stopped bailing us out. But and as recycling gets more expensive, we can pay for it one way or another. We can continue to pay for the process of putting it into bales, trying to sell it. Or if we put it all in the landfill, that's kicking the can down the road or maybe the plastic bottle. And our children are gonna have to pay for that. They're gonna have to pay for that with dealing with those landfills, dealing with water that gets polluted through landfills, the soil that gets polluted. And so regardless of, you know, how it works with this particular contract, I just want the council to know, from my point of view and many people that I know, including in Mr. Scott's district, that recycling is very important to us and we want that program to continue. Thank you.
I also wanted to say something about recycling. And I understand if the contract has to change. But I also don't think we, as a city, should continue to pay the same fee for the contract if we are doing more work now and they aren't picking up most of our. But I think we could also promote recycling as a city to encourage more people to do it. I have suggested, I don't know why any of the public trash cans don't include recycling and trash. And I think that would start people talking about it if nothing else. So, thank you.
I have one comment. Michelle said, I think there were, like you said, 2,000 families that, I don't have room in my garage for that nice container. So I just got done tonight going to Buster and nothing but there. And I met another guy and he said, so the council's gonna talk about it. I said, I'm gonna go tonight. We might have the landfill at all. I said, come to a council meeting. I don't see. But, you know, it's just kind of, I think there's a lot more of us that recycle, but it's not in the general numbers.
No, they do have smaller bins.
You haven't seen them.
Okay.
But I don't mind going out there twice a month. They are so great out there.
I have one, one question, one comment in terms of the taxes. And I've always been a tax person, Don knows. If we are increasing the taxes by two and a half percent, my concern is how much over that two and a half percent, which we need to meet our financial responsibilities, is money that's kind of out there. I'm just curious about that. My concern is that, as is always, if we keep increasing taxes, what's gonna happen is the people who are living on fixed incomes are gonna have a very difficult time. Social Security, that kind of thing, people who are living on pensions from other sources, their income doesn't go up each year. So I'm very concerned if we meet our basic responsibility that the money between that and what we agree on is not that large.
It's not going up 2.5%.
No, it's, that's what I'm asking.
It's going to go up 2.5% on what the city share, the city receives, which is only 26% of the entire property tax bill. Okay? We're lowering it from last year. Last year was three and a half percent. And we've dropped it back to two and a half percent.
You're not lowering it. You're increasing it less than you increased it last year, just to be clear. Nothing's been lowered.
All right, I stand corrected. It is not as much as what we requested last year at three and a half percent. It's gonna be two and a half percent. And that's a break even for the pensions. There is not gonna be any extra.
I'd like to ask a question about the fiber network. The one thing that I'm not sure I heard was whether, how that would affect drawing new businesses and industry into our community. So...
Well, that was one of the interesting things about, with Highland, they've started their fiber system about 10 years ago. And they're very pleased to announce the top-end organic dog food chain from, that produces 80% of the world's, is putting their training center into Highland. Because of the broadband network that they have there, they're also looking at a $180 million data center. And the one thing that I've always complained about was that our Economic Development Corporation, JRA DC, has broadband as second on their agenda to get for the community. And that's because the survey that they did for internet tech jobs for this area is 32,000. For the nation, it's 104. And for Illinois, it's 126. So we're $92,000 behind the Illinois average for internet tech jobs in this area because we don't have the infrastructure, like the Field of Dreams. It's just trying to get it here. And then seeing what opportunities are, come out of that. I mean, I can't tell you that what companies would wanna come here. But I do know if there is a choice of having a complete fiber network or none at all, just depending on what service provider, then they'd rather go to the place that a gigabit level service.
Do we need a motion to go into executive session?
I'd make a motion to adjourn the executive session.
Our general secretary by Alderman Cook, and we are discussing collective bargaining. And first, you know.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd ask the clerk to please call roll. Adams?
Here.
Bartlett?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Lonergan?
Here.
Odenell? Scott?
Here.
Wonkel?
Here.
Wormowski? Williams? Mayor Ezra?
Here.
City Attorney Beer?
Here.
You have a call. Thank you. Is there a reading of the minutes this evening?
I still move.
Alderman Hopkins, second by Alderman Scott. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Presentation of petitions?
We have none.
And any communications?
None tonight.
And no claims?
No claims.
That's correct. And I'd like, before the mayor's report, happy birthday to Alderman Hopkins.
Yes, appreciate that.
The one item under the mayor's report is a resolution approving internet service agreements with CAS Cable TV, Inc. for the Municipal Services Department and wastewater treatment plant. Alderman Scott, second by Alderman, Alderman, large, old metal?
Being resolved that the service agreements between the City of Jacksonville and CAS Cable TV is hereby approved.
Any discussion?
I would just like to add that I do think we need to look at what kind of connectivity we can get to Jacksonville so we don't have to keep paying other companies to do what we could do.
I would ask the clerk to please call roll. Adams?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Lonergan?
Yes.
Odenell?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Wonkel?
Yes.
Motion passes. Any public comment at this time? Consent agenda items tonight. Finance, IT, and Personnel. Alderman Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one item from that. That is the Treasurers Report for October 31, 2019, which the Alderman received under packets.
Public Protection. Alderman Hopkins?
Resolution authorizing waiver of advertisement for bids and accepting proposal for a vehicle for the Jacksonville Police Department. I do believe Chief Meford handled this very well and is coming in under the cost. So, thank you.
And Utility. Alderman Wonkel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Three items tonight. Number one, resolution authorizing payments from the Water Works and Sewers Project Fund for services rendered improvement projects. Number two, resolution approving a quote for meter reading fixed network, Midwest Meter Incorporated. Number three, resolution approving 2020 Utility Department Budget to be effective January 1, 2020, in ISO move.
And is there a second? Alderman Lonergan? You've heard the items under the consent agenda. Is there any you wish to pull for further discussion at this time? I would ask the clerk to please call a roll. Cook?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Lonergan?
Yes.
Odenell? Scott?
Yes.
Wonkel?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Motion passes. Committee reports tonight. We have one item, Finance, IT, and Personnel. Alderman Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one item tonight. It's the first reading of an ordinance levying taxes for 2019.
Is that a?
An ISO move.
Motion, second by Alderman Wonkel?
We had ordained that the City Council approves the tax levy for 2019 with a two and a half percent increase. That being, for the general corporate purposes, $4,082,863. For the library, sum of $520,000. For the police pension fund, sum of $1,151,700. And for the fire pension fund, the sum of $903,400.
Any discussion? This is first reading. I'd ask the clerk to please call roll. Hopkins?
Yes.
Lonergan?
Yes.
Odenell? Scott?
Yes.
Wonkel?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Motion passes. First reading. Any old business this evening? Any new business? We'll just hold our meeting in December, December 9.
December 9?
As scheduled.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No.
I just wanna make a reminder again for the media that's here that if there's any groups or anyone that wants to come forward to help us with the bandstand, the community park, prevailing wage estimates those costs to be between 70 and 120,000. Of course, it could be a lot cheaper if an outside entity wanted to help raise the money or put a plan together in order to bring that cost down substantially less. So...
Very good. Thanks. And I also wanna thank Alderman Adams for stepping in and raising some money for Big Brother, Big Sister at the Hot Winged Eagle contest.
I was glad to take your place, Andy.
I wouldn't be here today if I hate those things. So, thank you, Brandon. Any other new business?
Just a note to the Alderman. We are just about ready to bring out the budget for the general fund to the Alderman. I'm waiting on a few more numbers from the insurance company with regard to our liability insurance and the MFT money. But that's all down there. I'll mail that out to you or I'll send it to you in email. You can look it all over if you have any questions. We're waiting to the end of the month, November 30, to really get the 11-month actual where we're at actually. And I try not to play with that in December. So those numbers will remain the same throughout the month and throughout the budget process. But remember that the actual numbers for the 2019 will change because you're gonna have more expenses in December. But it's just easier to go ahead and work on the budget that whole time using the end of November's numbers. But we'll, we'll get that out. And according to ordinance, I have to have it to you December 1. So I'll try my best to get it within that period.
Very good. Any other new business tonight? Well, happy Thanksgiving.
I, I was just gonna mention, I have talked a, a number of times about other forms of taxes we could look at for revenue. And some, at some point, I'd like to see that on an agenda to see about whether we can lower that property tax levy down even further. So we'll just look at what we can do with that in the future.
Any other discussion? Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Any motion now? Alderman Hopkins, second by Alderman Lonergan? We are adjourned.